Hello and welcome to the District 4 City Council Debate, coming to you live from the University of Washington Lyceum. I'm Hannah Kim with Fox 13.
I'm Josh Cohen with Crosscut.
And I'm Matt Markovich with Cairo News Radio.
This debate series has been organized by the Seattle City Club in districts where no incumbent is running. The Seattle City Club is a nonprofit organization dedicated to informing, connecting, and engaging the public to strengthen the civic health of our region. Thanks to our sponsors Comcast, GSBA, Puget Sound Energy, and the Henry M. Jackson Foundation. We also want to thank our media partners and our production partner, PNTA, for making this broadcast possible.
And we want to thank our live audience here in the Lyceum at the hub at the University of Washington. They've agreed to stay silent and civil during the discussion and debate tonight. No cheers, no boos. They'll hold their applause except for the very beginning and at the very end.
But you can follow along wherever you are on social media, on the social media platform of your choice. Just use the hashtag C-E-L-E-X. That's S-E-A-E-L-E-X. Now it's time to meet our candidates, and here's the time where you can applaud. Introducing Ron Davis. And Maritza Rivera.
Here's the format our candidates will follow during the debate. Each candidate will have 90 seconds for an opening statement. We'll ask an initial question. Both candidates will have one minute to answer, and our panel will then lead a follow-up discussion and then go on to the next topic before moving on. So we flipped a coin. Maritza Rivera won that, and we're going to go with you, and you've decided to go first. So you have 90 seconds to go with your opening statement. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, and thank you for having me here this evening. I am the mom of two daughters at Ingram High School, where there was a school shooting, sadly, last fall, where a student got killed and shot inside the school. And as I was in the parking lot waiting for my daughters to come out of lockdown, they were in lockdown for hours, I was terrified, and I thought the public safety situation in Seattle is such that I can't sit around and wait, and I can't sit around and watch what's happening. I never thought that would happen here in Seattle of all places. I grew up in New York City, in the Bronx, in a low-income, predominantly black and brown neighborhood where I didn't feel safe a day in my life. And I came to Seattle 22 years ago because it was so safe and vibrant. And to have this happen at my child's school was really tragic for me, and obviously for the child that lost his life and the child that actually did the shooting. You know, when I talk to voters at the doors at the D4, they're concerned about public safety as well. That's their number-one concern. They're concerned about home break-ins and car break-ins. The small businesses are concerned also about break-ins and the situation with having to replace windows and doors. And, you know, folks don't want to go downtown because they don't feel as safe. We got to get back Seattle to the safe and vibrant place that I moved to 22 years ago, and we're going to do that. If I am elected on the city council, I will work to, with the other city council members and the mayor and residents to make that happen. Thank you.
I'm Ron Davis. It's great to be here. I am running to make it so Seattle is a place that people can start a career, raise a family, and age happily and safely at home without breaking the bank. I am the product of a teen pregnancy, and so I have a lot of passion around this because even though my parents were minimum-wage workers, they were able to get a toehold in the middle class because housing was affordable. That toehold got my sister and I to college, and I eventually went on to Harvard Law School, where I graduated with honors. I won awards for public policy work, and I later spun out a company from MIT with some other folks also from Stanford in the tech world. I've been a CEO and a dealmaker or a consultant helping other people, other companies, with their enterprise sales efforts ever since. I've also been doing public policy work as a volunteer for more than a decade in things like through the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association, the University YMCA, and at the state level working on passing legislation for transit, housing, and, excuse me, climate. I do want to say, you know, I'm a policy nerd, and I hope that we can focus on that tonight, and I want to acknowledge that the King County Democratic Party released a statement today calling for my opponent to stop using MAGA-style gaslighting and outright fabrications against me and my platform and to remedy serious concerns about campaign financial disclosures. Look, I have not wanted to have those conversations in our forums. I really want us to stay focused on policy tonight. What's good for this city? What will make this city thrive? What will make our families thrive? And what will make it a safe, prosperous place to grow?
We can all agree with that. Thank you for your opening statements about not taking this personal. Let's keep it to the policies as much as possible. I'm going to ask you this question to learn a little bit more about you guys. This is a pivotal time for Seattle, a city facing a lot of challenges. What makes you better equipped than your opponent when it comes to policy ideas and things that you are going to do for the city? I will remind you, you will have time for rebuttal, so please allow your candidate to fully speak and get that 60 seconds. We're going to start with you, Ron, on that.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I won awards at Harvard Law School for doing policy work in, and I've been doing policy work for years specifically in housing, homelessness, climate, and transportation. Those are the core things that we deal with here in Seattle, as well as safety. I'm also a graduate of Harvard Law School. I've also been a really effective leader and dealmaker in my career, so everything I've touched has gone pretty darn well. I've left a wake of really successful companies or departments, and I've also left really strong relationships in all the places I've worked, built coalitions to get complex deals done across organizations, across departments, the kind of work that you actually have to do to be functional on city council. You know, my opponent had 26 of her 40 former employees sign a letter saying that she created a toxic work environment, made it very difficult to do their work at the city of Seattle, and shouldn't be trusted with public money. I think the contrast could not be clearer in terms of ability to deliver public policy at the city level.
Maritza.
Thank you. I just want to address that I've been endorsed by Mayor Harrell. I am very proud of the work I did at the Office of Arts and Culture, and, you know, I have a lot of respect for the employees there. What makes me better equipped is I have 30 years of public service. Having graduated from law school, I had the opportunity to work for President Clinton as liaison to the Hispanic community across the country, where I worked on a myriad of public policy issues. As the president was crafting policy, I worked with community to ensure that their needs were being met within that policy that was created. I've also worked for a city council member, Tom Rasmussen. I've worked for the ACLU in town post-9/11 on Know Your Rights campaign education when Middle Eastern communities were getting targeted by the FBI. I've worked for two mayoral organizations. I have lots of experience with public policy and budgeting that I can offer to this position.
Is there anything else you guys would like to say before we move on? Okay. So the violent crime rate in Seattle reached a 15-year-high last year, according to the Seattle Police Department. Public safety is top of mind for many voters. Some attendees submitted questions and asking what you'll do to reduce crime. So on that topic, I'm going to pass it on to Matt Markovich.
So my first question, or our panel's first question, is a fairly simple one. Is Seattle safe? And if it's not, why is it not working? But if there is some elements that are working, what are they? So my question to candidate Davis first.
Seattle's not safe enough. Too many people are dying of gun violence. Far more people are dying of fentanyl overdoses. And the second half of the question is, why is it not safe and what can we do?
What is working? What is not?
Yeah, I mean, we have programs that work really effectively, like community passageways, which are extremely good at reducing gun violence, particularly among youth, and we chronically underserve them every year when we talk about budgets and accountability, but we don't actually fund the stuff that works. We have programs like LEAD and CoLEAD that are really effective at getting people off the streets, stopping consuming, and into recovery, and actually long-term recovery, extremely effective, started by Lisa Dugard, who won the MacArthur Genius Award for that. And she's working to architect, threading that in better with our police department. We have programs like that that are very effective, but they are chronically underfunded. The leaders of LEAD and community passageways have both endorsed me. You know, we have to scale those things up. We obviously have to try to deal with our staffing issues at the police department. But, you know, we are way down, so we also are going to have to start to manage that portfolio better with things like behavioral health first responders and camera enforcement with traffic.
Candidate Rivera.
Yes, thank you. We have a huge public safety problem in Seattle. We have very high 911 response times. The 2020 decision by the city council to defund the police was a huge mistake, and it's made the situation, our public safety situation, worse since the pandemic. 911 response times are 12 to 15 minutes about. We need to get them down to nine, to five minutes. When someone is in crisis, we need to get help to them right away, not wait 15 minutes for someone to show up. We have open, a huge open-air drug market crisis in the city, in the D4, on University Avenue, for instance, and of course downtown, all of Third Avenue, and we need to shut that down. I was glad to see a drug possession law passed to shut down open drug use. It's also an issue on our buses. Folks don't want to.
Can you, can you answer the question? Is it safe, basically?
It's not safe at the moment. We're having a huge public drug, I mean, excuse me, public safety crisis.
I've got a real quick follow-up, then. In your own district, is there a place you will not walk at night? Start with candidate Rivera.
Yeah, I wouldn't walk at night on the University Avenue, and I wouldn't walk at night at Ravenna-Cowen Park.
Candidate Davis.
Yeah, in the, in the parks, in the darkest parts of Ravenna and Cowen, I don't as well. It's also, as well as certain parts of Magnuson Park that are remote from the housing. And there are more places like the Av that I wouldn't advise my kids to go at night either.
One more. I have another question just regarding public safety. Now, yet for years, advocates of the unhoused say government and public have, should not conflate crime with homelessness. Now, property crime and homelessness were the two of the three top public safety concerns among two community surveys done by SPD in 2022. What policies would you implement to reduce the nexus of crime and homelessness that's cited in that report? What policies would you do to reduce the nexus of homelessness and crime?
Is it her turn to go first?
Yes, sorry. Candidate Rivera.
Oh, yes. Well, it's inhumane to leave people living on the streets where they're being preyed upon by drug dealers. There's, at some of the most dangerous encampments, drug dealing, sex trafficking, and gun violence. And so there is a nexus there. We need to bring people indoors. So I support permanent supportive housing with wraparound services, but we also need to, we don't have enough units, so we need to have temporary housing solutions for folks like sheltering, tiny homes.
So housing is the main answer for you, correct?
Housing, and also the drug possession law to shut down the drug dealers.
Candidate Davis.
Yeah, so the nexus tends to exist at two spots where people who are unhoused are the most likely to be victims of crime, and a subset of the unhoused, the visibly unhoused, who have chronic behavioral issues, who tend to commit lots of sort of petty thefts and be in and out of jail. How do we address this? We know that permanent supportive housing, tiny homes, programming like LEAD to get people recovering from their addictions that drive them to make poor decisions are the most effective evidence-based ways to address this, and that is what I support.
So housing first, real quick. Housing first, you agree or disagree?
Yes, yeah.
Candidate Rivera, housing first?
You need housing with services, but you also need temporary housing in the absence of the permanent housing wraparound services. You can't leave people living on streets.
Agreed.
So as we know, a lot of 911 calls, not enough police officers, but some of the 911 calls going out are rushing to fentanyl overdoses. Fentanyl is posing a grave danger, not just for users, but so many in the community as well. So outside of educational campaigns and Narcan, what specific policy would you sponsor to decrease the flow of fentanyl into the city?
One of the challenges the fentanyl is actually made in the city, you know, we, we have the ability to do some enforcement here, but unfortunately, because we don't manage, like, federal crimes, we don't, of course, have the ability to do most of the prosecution of actual drug, real drug trafficking. But I think getting, actually infiltrating the rings is key. I think staffing up the department, this police department as best we can is key. I also think that in the end, demand management is the best way to stop, to stop it, because we know that when we actually get people into recovery, we have programs, like I said, LEAD, that are extremely effective at getting people into recovery, and when the demand's not there, the supply moves on to places that are more profitable. So it's a mix of enforcement and actually getting people treated, because if people aren't treated, treated and housed, excuse me, because when people are unhoused, they become much more likely to become addicted to these substances. So this is the other piece, is if we don't address our housing crisis, we're going to keep putting, pushing people into trauma and making them more likely to be driver.
I want to go back to what you just said about demand, managing demand. How do you do that? How do you, I mean, fentanyl is such an addictive drug. How do you manage demand when somebody is hooked? How do you do that?
Oh, yeah, well, so we, again, there's programs like LEAD are extremely effective at getting people into recovery, moving them on to Suboxone, and off of fentanyl.
I've specifically asked for new specific policies. LEAD has been around for a long time. I understand that you're saying.
Scaling LEAD, but scaling LEAD would be a new specific policy.
I understand that it's underfunded, as you said earlier. Is there any specific new policies?
Oh, no, I would rather stick to evidence-based policy that we know works.
So you would only go with LEAD?
I don't know that I would only go with it, but I'm not, I've not got some dandy-off-the-wall new idea. I'd go, I'd start with the things that I know work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, to decrease the flow of fentanyl, first of all, the drug possession law, which I referenced earlier, is a really important tool because the open-air drug markets are an issue, and so is the drug dealing that's happening in the encampments where folks are getting hooked on fentanyl to begin with. So it is an important tool to get drug dealers off the streets and to funnel people into services, because people do need drug addiction services. And so, you know, that's what we need to put focus on, and I think that is a great tool to do it. And then, of course, we need to hire more police officers to address the issue.
So I didn't hear anything specifically new. Is there anything that you would put on the table for fentanyl specifically?
Yeah, I'm open to considerations of new policies to try to address the fentanyl crisis. Obviously, this is a crisis that's around the country, and I think that everyone is grappling with the impacts, and everyone is trying to figure out, you know, how can we stem this epidemic that we're seeing, the fentanyl crisis that we're seeing, and the drug deaths that are happening every day from fentanyl?
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Matt, do, Matt has a follow-up.
I had a, just, it's not a retort to her, but I'm curious. Would you consider overdose prevention centers new? They're not new in New York, but they would be new in terms of actually putting them in place here.
So do you have a question about them?
I have a, I had a follow-up question. We're not doing, you guys, we're, we're not allowing you guys to ask each other questions.
Oh, I meant you, but okay. Yeah, fair enough.
If you have an answer, if you want to elaborate, I can give you 20 more seconds.
Yeah, I'll just say, I do support overdose prevention centers, which are evidence-based ways to clean up neighborhoods, drastically reduce drug deaths, and they're an extremely efficient way to get people to move into treatment. Eric, Eric Tulli Blank Adams is doing this to great effect in New York.
Just my follow-up was real quickly regarding the drug law that city council just passed. There was a previous version and a new version. If you were a city council member right now, which version would you have voted for?
I would, I would have voted for either version because we need the tool. I think that the, the original version, it was of concern because of this issue with not wanting to prosecute drug users. But I think that the mayor and the city attorney were very clear that that's not, that was not the intent of the original law. And so I think with the second version, they made sure to very much specify that it's not about jailing drug users. It's about really having a mechanism for funneling them into services and making sure that we're prosecuting drug dealers.
Okay. Candidate Davis.
Yeah, the first one wasn't written particularly well. The second one was better. I appreciated the guidance toward treatment. My feelings about this are mixed, because in the end, our past practices have also been mixed. So my support for it in the future is really going to be dependent on, are we actually delivering the treatment promises that the mayor says he wants to deliver? Or are we, are we actually throwing people in jail for this that its critics claim? So I think the key for us is to actually scale up those services, as I've mentioned several times, so I won't belabor the point.
Okay, so for more than 10 years, the Seattle Police Department was under a federal consent decree, as we know. Most of the provisions were removed this year, signaling significant progress by SPD when it comes to use of force and accountability, but some say the work is far from over. So for this first question, let's turn to Josh Cohen.
Yeah, so in 2018, the Seattle City Council voted to approve a new SPAG union contract, upsetting many police accountability advocates who said the contract weakened the city's ability to discipline and fire officers for misconduct. The next city council, of which one of you will be a member, is likely to be voting on a new SPAG contract. What sort of accountability measures do you hope to see in the contract, and would you approve a contract that does not have them? Maritza, let's start with you.
Yes, I would not want to see a contract that negotiates out accountability. We need to hold officers that are committing wrongdoing accountable, and we need to be providing training for other officers in general. And so we definitely do not want to have a contract that does not have accountability in it.
Ron?
Yeah. So reformers tell us the key is that accountability needs to be independent, civilian only, where no conflict, with no conflicts of interest, as in nobody that you work with is on it. It needs transparency, which means subpoena power, and it needs the ability to discipline officers when they step out of line. I would not vote for a SPAG contract that lacks these. These are basic forms of governance, and when, you know, look, I was a CEO and I had a board. The president has Congress, and Congress can fire them. Everybody needs a boss. And in a democracy, when we hand people a gun and we put their lives, everybody else's lives, in their hands, we cannot fail to deliver on this accountability. And I think actually, once we do that, not only will we, will we see better behavior, will we avoid things like that body, that horrifying body cam thing that happened the other day, but we can actually start to heal the relationship with the community and make progress in our community policing, in our evidence-based policing, and in our hiring.
Great. So as a follow-up to that, you know, the 2018 contract that was approved by the council, many of those accountability measures in it were things that that same city council implemented, voted to pass, and then when it came time, there's just immense pressure from SPAG to approve the contract. So starting with Ron, I'm just curious to hear, you know, how do you resist the pressure of SPAG to push through a contract that has less accountability measures, given their sort of strong political influence?
Yeah, so it would be really embarrassing to fail to do so after I pledge right now that I will not vote for any contract that fails to have these measures. That's how I'll resist.
Maritza.
Well, we need to work together as a city council and with the mayor to ensure that when these contracts are up, that we are doing everything that we can to make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable to the accountability measures that we're putting in place. So it's working together that we're going to be able to push back and make sure that we are following through with those accountability measures. They are clearly important, full stop. When a police officer is engaging in wrongdoing, we need to hold that police officer accountable. Thank you.
A new poll by the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce just revealed that three-quarters, and this poll was taken in the first two weeks of September, 700 survey. It revealed that three-quarters of the voters don't trust that the council can reform policing without compromising public safety. Do you believe that to be true? Three-quarters of the respondents said they could not trust the council with that. Candidate Davis.
Oh, I'm sorry. The current council, I totally agree, they've been dysfunctional. They approved this, it's not exactly the same council, but they approved the previous contract, and they have not done a good job at actually working on this. Do I think that a city council that is elected cannot do that? No, we, we have examples of this all over the country, of jurisdictions making progress on this, and I will actually say, we're not as far as we should get, but we in Seattle have made progress on our contract with SPMA, the seniors officers. We've, senior officers, not the seniors officers, excuse me, and also with the King County Police Officers Guild as well. So this is not something that is something that Seattle can't do.
But is there a balance? So can you compromise? Can you have a fair compromise between public safety, the needs that people are all talking about here, and an adequate police force have, with reform?
Reform does not make us less safe, and that's actually not what the voters said there. They said they don't trust the council to pull that off. So while I agree with them about the current council, I don't agree with what I think you embedded in that premise, and I don't think was in actually what the voters said, which is that there is somehow a trade-off between accountability and transparency and being safe.
Candidate Rivera.
Yes, I think that it makes sense, that I'm not surprised by the poll, given the 2020 defund actions by the city council, which then subsequently led to our public safety situation being much worse post the pandemic. I think we can both do accountability, but also we need to hire more police officers. We need to deal with training police officers, but there are officers out there doing a good job as well. They don't feel supported, and we're having a hard time recruiting police officers because of the actions that we've taken. I also think that we need to look at how we're going to recruit more officers, because having a fully staffed, staffed police department is really important to public safety. So I'd like to look at things like, let's recruit young people to these great jobs, doing an effort like the firefighters did, where they did a collaboration with the Seattle Colleges to do a certificate program for firefighters, and then they could pull from those youth into the fire academy. We ought to look at doing the same thing for the police academy.
Mayor Harrell's at 1450 as the number of officers he would like to have staffing. Would you support fewer officers and put some of that money to alternative policing methods? Candidate Rivera.
Yes, we need to have a fully staffed SPD to address 911 response times and other public safety issues that police officers can't currently get to, like the house break-ins and the car break-ins, et cetera. And we can only do that with a fully staffed, so I, police department. So I support Mayor Harrell's plan to hire more officers.
But none of that money going toward alternative policing?
Once we are fully staffed, if there's money, then I think we can look at that. But we need a fully staffed police department to address public safety in the city.
Candidate Davis.
Yeah, so we are off by 27%, or as this, I think we're somewhere in the mid-900s now, and that's terrible. And it also turns out that Memphis is off by 25%, Atlanta's off by 27%, and Tulsa's off by 20. This is a national problem. Hundreds of thousands of people have left the discipline. So I don't support pretending that we can get 20X what SPD says we can, which is 15 to 30, but I also don't support pulling money out of the police department to fund alternates. I think we need to tax ourselves to fund alternates.
How much do you think, then, is a reasonable number? You were saying that you don't think we're going to maybe get to the 1,400 we're hoping for. At least you're saying it will be hard. So what is a comfortable number for you?
A comfortable number would be fully staffed, but that's not what SPD says is possible. SPD says, given the hiring conditions, including 85% of jurisdictions in Washington State being down, and almost all of them offering bonuses, bonuses, marketing, and maybe, you know, politicians doing some magic, our best-case scenario is to grow by 15 to 30. So my job as a leader is not to wish the problem away, it's to identify what the professionals say and say, okay, how do we handle the portfolio of emergencies we have in the meantime?
So why do you think that is? Why do you think it's so hard to recruit police officers lately? What is your opinion on that?
Hundreds of thousands of people left the profession. I mean, that's what police, that's what the people doing the recruiting say to us. That's why the, why almost every jurisdiction in the country is struggling. After 2020, and the protests came up, there was a set of people whose feelings were harmed by that, for better or for worse, and so a lot of people retired.
Talking about the defund?
The defund movement, and just a lot of critique of the police, right, nationally. And so hundreds of thousands of people left the discipline nationally. And so, you know, in my world, like, I'm going to, hopefully we'll talk about affordable housing right now in a minute, but I'm not going to make, give you a plan that involves me changing interest rates or the price of lumber. So I don't think it's reasonable to build a city plan around doing magic with national hiring markets.
Do you have a number that you're comfortable with?
The number I would be comfortable with is fully staffing, and we just, we need to have that as a goal, and we need to work toward that goal. And like, we need to, like I said earlier, we need to make sure that we're addressing the, you know, the culture in the police department, both training officers, but then also making sure that we are supporting the police officers that are doing a good job, and making sure that, that we are recruiting folks that want to do this job because they see that we're supporting the officers that are doing.
And we have to move on, but really, could, when you say fully funded, are you talking about the 1,400 number?
Yes, we have to have that as a goal and keep working toward that number.
Okay. We're going to move on to homelessness, a big topic. So Seattle is coming up on the eighth anniversary of declaring a homeless crisis. Hundreds of millions of money have been spent in just the last several years to fight homelessness, yet no big dent. We can see it out on the streets. Name a few things the city is doing right now that are not effective. Again, city doing right now that is not effective.
Oh, that, that'll be fun. So, well, one is the way we build affordable housing, costs between $50,000 to $70,000 more per unit than it needs to. Two is the King County Regional Homelessness Authority was set up to fail by being designed with three boards, a lack of accountability, and an opt-in model where it's the equivalent of us going around saying, hey, would you like to pay for parks this year, to all of our neighboring communities, and us calling that a regional solution. Lehigh has had serious behavioral issues in terms of as a, as a provider. Sometimes we claim that we're, we are providing housing to encampments when we're actually when we're actually offering sobriety first or segregated shelter that we know nobody will take, and we use as an excuse to sweep. There's all kinds of ways we're wasting money. We could be more efficient. I will note, though, that McKinsey Partners did a study and said, we still do realistically need to spend between $450 million to 1.1 billion more a year incrementally. But we also need to hold these programs accountable and make sure that we get all we can out of them, or reallocate.
All right, Seth?
Yes, the King County Regional Housing Authority, which is supposed to be in charge of the regional response, really overpromised and under-delivered. And just by way of an example, they recently pulled the plug on Partnership for Zero, which was supposed to address the big homelessness problem downtown. So we need to make sure that if we are going to continue with the regional housing authority, that we are doing what we can to set it up for success. It has a new director, that will, there'll be a search for the new director, and we need to really work on who that new director will be to get that King County Regional Housing Authority back on track. We definitely need a regional response because Seattle can't shoulder the burden of the homelessness problem in the region. We need to work in partnership with the other cities. And so it'll be really important for the new director to do that. Oh, did you have?
No.
Oh, sorry. No, and then, you know, also, when you ask what is also not effective is, you know, we are taking this, oh, I ran out of time. Can I finish?
Yes, because you've actually had less time to speak so far, so go ahead.
Thank you, perfect. We've had this, I support permanent supportive housing and doing an individual response to folks, the unhoused that need housing and services. But we don't have enough service, permanent supportive housing services and units. So we do need to do the temporary options. And, you know, folks need to, we, it is inhumane to leave people living on streets, and we need to get people housed, even in temporary sheltering. And that means that they're going to have to accept some form of shelter if some is available to them versus allowing folks to live on the street if their preferred option is not available to them. Because we really need to, for the safety of the folks living on the street and the safety of the neighbors, we need to really get folks housed.
We all have follow-ups to this issue. So I'm going to ask my first follow-up, so it doesn't have to be long answers.
Okay.
You guys both brought up the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, so, and both critical of it. Are you saying that you think that it should be scrapped? Bring in something else altogether? Because we've tried it, it's not working? Or do you want to keep it and evolve it?
The latter. We do need a regional response. But I, what I described, the governance model, the opt-in model, is a failure. And so we actually have to tie the region together in funding and governing the response correctly. So I'm on a, I'm on the put it on a sort of short lease and keep it accountable and reform it side of the debate. I'm not ready to knock it off yet.
Okay. Maritza?
Yes, we do need a regional response. If it's not the KCRHA, then it's going to have to be another regional response. That's what we're doing right now. And I think that with a new director coming in, we should give the opportunity to see what happens with the knowledge that down the line, we might have to pivot to some other regional mechanism if it's not working well. Because one thing we do in Seattle is, if things aren't working well, we keep funding them. And then, instead of looking at a different model to address the problem for the outcomes that we want.
You both highlighted areas that you think are not working in the city's homelessness response. Tell me a little bit about some areas that you think are working, or if they don't exist, in your mind, some things that you would bring to the table as a city council member to make progress on homelessness. Maritza, let's start with you.
Yeah, well, I think that, again, you know, permanent supportive housing is the thing that we know works to house people. People can't stay housed if they don't have the services that they need in order to stay housed. So that is really, you know, the thing that we should be striving for. But in the absence of that, I do think there are some other models, like tiny homes, which are working really well. The firefighters, I feel so honored to have their endorsement. They're telling me, you know, the tiny home model works very well as a temporary solution. They hardly ever have to go to a tiny home village for a response of any kind.
Thank you. Ron?
Yeah, a number of things. I agree, tiny homes are effective, particularly as a sort of short-term triage, get people off the street. I was, spoke at the Nicholsville event recently, their anniversary. Co-lead, I mentioned lead earlier, Co-lead does a really nice job of getting people into housing that also need treatment. The Downtown Emergency Services Center in Plymouth are overstretched, but there are examples of permanent supportive housing that are effective. They need supplemental, supplemental help. And then, you know, in my own neighborhood, we brought in Cedar Crossing, 254 family-sized units, right? So we are generating a lot of housing as well, but we need to do better.
I have a question. If a person who's living in a public space, like sidewalks, is repeatedly offered housing and services, and they refuse, what should the city do with that person? Candidate Rivera?
As I mentioned earlier, if there is a space available, then people need to take the space that is available. It is really inhumane and unsafe for people to be living on the street.
How are you going to force them to take that space?
We should look at creating policy to make, to have that mechanism, because we really should be bringing people in from the streets.
Candidate Davis?
Yeah, so it's an interesting hypothetical, but there's a reason it's a hypothetical. Because when we actually offer housing, something like 93% of people say yes. So you know what, let's get through the first 93%, and then we're going to figure out those really hard cases. We love to fixate on those hard cases as an excuse to prevent us from actually making the investments to address the other 93. So that's where my energy is right now.
Some homeless encampments do pose a safety risk. What do you do about that? Are you for sweeps? Because some, you know, some people don't want sweeps, it's controversial. So do you agree or disagree with sweeps? Maritza?
I support Mayor Harrell's approach to encampments and clearing dangerous encampments. You know, we've said tonight that it's inhumane and unsafe for people to live on the streets. A lot of these encampments have drug, drug dealing going on in the tents, sex trafficking, lots of gun violence, and violence against, you know, women and youth are particularly vulnerable. So we do need to bring people off the streets.
So you are for sweeps in certain situations, is that what you're saying?
I am for clearing encampments to make sure that folks are safe and putting them into temporary sheltering, for instance, and getting them off the streets.
Ron?
Sweeps are unconstitutional under Martin v. Boise, and they're a really great way to light money on fire without accomplishing anything. They move people from one part of the city to another and often make the situation worse. Now, resolving encampments is important. And sometimes the Harrell administration does resolve encampments with housing, and I definitely support it when they do that. And we know that we do outreach and we actually offer real housing. We're extremely successful. So I think sweeps are a way to avoid the issue and waste money, and I think we need to use housing. So I'm for clearing an encampment if it's getting people into housing.
What, what happens if they don't go into housing? If there's one or two or three people left behind? Because sometimes that's the case. I'm going to give you a perfect example. In Wallingford, which is your district, we had a school, John Stanford International School. There was an encampment there for a year. Parents were upset, there was a fatal shooting there, widespread drug use, crime. For more than a year, parents said, remove it, please, because it's a safety hazard. So in that specific situation, since you're not for sweeps, what would you have done?
So as, to my understanding, and I've worked with the social workers who actually got that encampment and cleared, it was cleared without a sweep. And so I don't, I don't know about.
It took more than a year, so we were wondering.
Yes.
It made the news, it was a big deal.
I remember, it was terrible. What I would do is not sit on my hands and fail to deliver affordable housing over and over and over again, and use sweeps as an excuse to not do so.
Okay. Do you have a response?
Well, I would say on that particular, it's interesting. I did have a conversation this week about that particular encampment. And it turns out that there were only eight people living in that encampment, and they all did get some form of housing. And so that means that that encampment and many more than eight people were at that in part, at that encampment throughout the year with all this criminal activity. So if it had been only eight people, we should have cleared it sooner and gotten those eight people some type of sheltering, but shut down the encampment that was very dangerous, and it was near a school.
All right, so we're going to move on to housing, which is, you know, a subset of homelessness. So Josh, we're going to have the first question.
Great. So this first question is about both market rate and subsidized affordable housing. According to a recent projection by the state, Seattle is estimated to need another 112,000 new houses, apartments, and condos over the next 20 years to meet demand. How should Seattle address that need, and where should those homes go? Let's start with Maritza.
Yeah, we need housing options and different kinds of housing all across the city. Affordable housing, public housing, market rate housing, mixed-use housing. We have House Bill 1110 that passed recently by the legislature allowing for duplexes, quadplexes, and sixplexes in transit centers. And we should be implementing HB 1110 in Seattle. And I'll tell you, in our district, there's Bryant Heights is a great example. It actually got built before HB 1110 passed. But it's a great example of a development that is duplexes, it has quadplexes, it's near the transit center. It's right on 65th on a bus line. And it also has preserved tree canopy, which is really important as a climate change issue that we're dealing with across the city as well. So that is a mechanism that we can currently use to create housing across the city.
Ron?
Yeah, legalization, so brought-up zoning all over the city. I actually helped pass HB 1110. I'm on the board at Futurewise, and we led the, led the charge on that. And in addition, that brought-up zoning needs to be paired with limited lot coverage, so we can protect trees. And also, we need to be investing in more trees. And a difference between me and my opponent here is that the Master Builders Association, who wrote the tree legislation that made it easier to cut trees down, has put tens of thousands of dollars into a PAC supporting her. The other thing that we need to do is address our permitting process, which is abysmal. We have a two-track permitting system. Many other jurisdictions have a single-track system. Tacoma's a single-track, and they, they get permits done about half the time. We could, we could actually attach a builder's remedy to it to make it so that we actually get done in more like 16 weeks. And then there's a number of specific rules that make that process onerous that we could also do. We should also use only objective, not subjective standards in our permitting process.
As a follow-up, is, is missing middle going to be sufficient? Do we need up zones beyond that? And if so, where would they go?
Before you answer that, I'm just going to give Maritza. I know that he said something about you regarding the trees and attacked your policy there. You have time to rebut that.
Well, really about the PAC, I mean, as everyone knows, campaign finance laws preclude campaigns from being involved with anything related to a PAC or an independent expenditure. So our campaign has, we have, sorry. We have abided by every campaign finance law that we've been required to under the ethics law, laws in the, in the city and the state. But I'll say that my opponent was recently fined for putting out to mailers without the public disclosure that is required by the ethics committee.
So we want to just keep it to the policies.
I'd like to be able to respond to that, though.
We're going to, we're going to move on from that, okay? So Josh, we're good.
I guess we'll return to the question. Is missing middle, duplexes, quadplexes, sixplexes enough? Or do we need more density? And if so, where should it go? Ron, you start.
Puget Sound Regional Council and the Commerce Department say no. It will make up about 15 to 30% of the regional needs anyway. We need more, we need more density everywhere in the city, and I mentioned my plan above about how to do that. I do want to respond to the statement about the mailer, which was missing five words from disclosure. We paid the fine. It also came out today that Ms. Rivera did not, did not state tens of thousands of dollars of funds in income, and then a complaint has been filed. So I don't really want to hear about my house.
Let's just refrain from talking about those issues. Let's stick with the policy. We want to make the best time of what we have. Okay, Josh, do you have any more questions?
Well, I guess Maritza should also ask or respond. Is missing middle enough?
Well, I would say again, HB 1110 really gives us the opportunity to do more housing across the city. And we haven't done, you know, we keep having conversations about density. And here we have one opportunity where it is a law, and we can create housing of this type that all developers, including small developers, can also be creating housing under HB 1110. And so we really should be utilizing that law to create more housing across the city. And there's some other things we can do besides HB 1110 to encourage more housing across the city.
You're both talking about increasing density in housing. There's always going to be a trade-off. In a tight city like Seattle, where the streets are very narrow, there's very little parking. There's a push to put in bike lanes and bus lanes. Where do you sit on the trade-off on something like that? Where we don't have enough room to put in all the housing and the parking that should be going with it, and a lot of the plans don't require developers to add more parking for the development? What's going to happen to the bike lanes? Should there be more bike lanes to take up the parking that these developments are going to take? Candidate Davis?
Sorry. No city has ever made the transition to a dense city without handing over some right-of-way. And cities that require parking just end up putting all the buildings farther apart, like in Houston. It literally doesn't geometrically work. And so we do know the most efficient way is to use our space are things like pedestrianization, bike lanes, and getting people on buses. So while there, there will be some trade-offs here, but we do know that that is the only thing that any mature, successful city has ever done that started to pass the kinds of thresholds of density that we're at.
Candidate Rivera?
Yeah, we do need to protect bike lanes across the city because we know that there are a lot of fatalities happening. And so we really do need to protect those bike lanes across the city. You know, as we're building housing, there are a lot of infrastructure issues that we need to consider. That's why when I talk to voters at the doors, everyone is worried, making sure that as we support more development, and, and voters do support more development, but that we're doing it thoughtfully and gradually, and that we're taking all these infrastructure considerations into account.
Okay, so a recent report shows Seattle could face a $221 million budget shortfall by 2025. That leads to the question, how much do you tax? How much do you cut? Matt?
So how do you plan to strike a balance between raising taxes to generate revenue? And again, we're going to have that 250 million projected shortfall in 2025, and ensure that these tax policies are fair and equitable to all residents, including those with lower incomes? Candidate Rivera?
Yes, well, one thing that my opponent and I differ on, on a policy level, is on accountability. We really need to, one of the big things that city council and the mayor, one of the main responsibilities is to be good stewards of the public funds. And so we need to make sure that, that we are looking at the budget, looking at the programs and the services that we invest in, and make sure that they are getting the outcomes that we're intending when we make those investments. This current city council hasn't done a very good job of doing that accountability piece, and it's something that we really need to do. And then, once we engage in that exercise and we make sure that we are getting the outcomes that we're intending, then we move on to see how we can, what revenue we should be raising and looking at to, to fill the gaps. But the accountability piece is really big, and one, one that we have not been engaging in at the city.
Candidate Davis?
Yeah, I've actually articulated already tonight multiple programs that we should be holding accountable and either reforming or moving money out of. So that wasn't true. But I will say, one area we are different is I don't think that I can say the word accountability and make $200 million appear. It's true that some of these programs, we could get more affordable housing out of. We could get better, more efficient, safer, more equitable policing out of. What we can't do is shake the couch cushions and find $240 million. I support progressive taxes. You know, my wife is a doctor, and I'm in tech, and we pay about 3% of our income in state and local taxes. But a barista pays 17%. That's obscene. You don't have to be a leftist, you don't even really have to be a Democrat to think that's crazy. And so we do need more progressive taxes here. We could make modest adjustments to jumpstart. We could do what Alex Peterson has said with a top, a 2% top-up to the extreme capital gains tax that was passed at the state level and easily cover these gaps, without doing the water bill swap that he suggests.
Just follow-up for candidate Rivera. Where would any money come from for any of these affordable plans? Any new tax revenues on your horizon?
I would, after the accountability piece, I would consider, I would have conversations about the, looking at the capital gains.
Austerity first, and then taxes later? Tighten the belt?
Yes, and then we can look at things like a capital gains tax, for instance.
Where do you stand on universal income? Tacoma tried it, Seattle's thinking about it. Would you support that measure? Candidate Rivera?
I'm open to the conversation for sure. I know Tacoma tried it. It was a public-private partnership involving United Way and a corporation. And they, they, it was, it's a pilot program, and initially, it looks like it had good results. So definitely open to exploring the possibility here and having that conversation.
Universal basic income?
Yeah, it's studied in a few dozen places and generally produces very positive results. I've specifically made, that counter started in about five seconds. I've specifically made a proposal related to income taxes that would be, a flat tax that would be paired with a UBI that would make it functionally progressive. So I'm already on, on the record as supporting UBI.
And since with, you mentioned income taxes. So I know that that obviously is not a city council issue per se. You don't have the jurisdiction to vote on that. But if the state legislature were to create an income tax, would you support that?
I would. And actually, according to an appeals court judge, we, we would be able to do it at up to 1%, the equivalent of the city council's ability to tax other forms of property.
So you're saying that you would not wait even for the state legislature to make the decision on income tax overall?
Paired with the UBI, so it would be progressive, yes.
How do you feel about that, Maritza?
If the state legislature passed an income tax, I'm, I'm in support of that. I mean, they've tried to do it in the past, and it has failed.
It has failed, but if they don't, would you support pushing it in a different way here in the city of Seattle?
I support, I would have the conversation about it. I don't, I'm not familiar with the legality of it, but I'm open to the conversation for sure.
All right, so we've covered a lot of ground, you guys. Thank you so much for staying with us so far on this. And over the next two minutes, we'll cover even more with our lightning round. It's a fun round, okay? So we've got two minutes on the clock, yes or no answer? So we've got two minutes on the clock, yes or no answers only, no maybes, please. So pick yes or no.
No guarantees.
Yes. And to help really choose, we have those helpful paddles in your hand there. Green, as you can see, is thumbs up and orange is thumbs down. And try to hold it up so the cameras can see it back there. Okay, so let's get going with this. And Matt, you've got the first one.
First crack. Are you in favor of rent control should the state legislature allow it? Hold it up. Kennedy Davis, you want?
No maybes.
So I'm sorry. When I talked to the people earlier, they told us.
This is yes or no.
I was told earlier we could do this. Depends on the rent control.
No, no maybes.
Well, it depends on the rent control. That's the answer. I'm not going to give you an answer that's not true.
Where do you lean more towards?
If it's second generation rent control, which is larger than inflation.
No, no answers, okay?
Does D4, does D4 need more dog parks?
Yes or no? Raise the paddle. Orange is down, green is yes?
I don't actually know, but I'll say yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, what about I don't know?
You guys agree with that? All right. So do you think your policies, for the most part, most part, align with Mayor Bruce Harrell? Yes or no?
Would you support a safe RV lot if the location was in District 4? Yes or no?
We're circling back here, but do you think the wealthiest Seattleites should be taxed even more to generate revenue?
Okay, I'll do that, just.
Is public transit in Seattle safe? Yes or no?
Kind of talked about this earlier. Would you have voted for the recently passed municipal law to prosecute people for public drug use? Would you have voted for it?
Totally, yeah.
I've been very public, I'm officious.
Yes or?
Beyond that. That's my answer.
No answer?
No answer.
You can say no answer if you'd like.
Do city employees deserve more than a 1% cost of living adjustment?
I rallied for it.
If you were not running for D4, an incumbent Alex Peterson was running, would you vote for him? Yes or no?
Depends who he's running against.
So you don't want to answer this question?
No, it really depends who he's running against.
Okay, let's move on, Matt. No answer?
Is he running against Elizabeth Warren?
No answer. Go ahead.
Gas, gasoline prices in the state are some of the highest in the country. Some blame the state's tax on emissions from the gas refiners. Do you believe that to be true?
Sure. I'm for it still.
I actually don't know. So does that mean?
Is it based on the governor's, the policy of taxing pollution? So that's why we have gas prices high? Do you believe that to be the case?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Last question. Do you think your policy, again, well, we've asked that one. I'm going to go with the, a fun one.
Oh, good.
Will the Mariners ever win a World Series? Yes or no? Oh!
Oh, no.
Ouch.
I'm going to rally for the Mariners.
All right. And that's all the time we have. We'd like to invite candidates to give closing statements now. We'll put 60 seconds on the clock and we're going to go with you, Maritza. 60 seconds.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for hosting us here this evening. I appreciate the opportunity. You know, we can tackle our toughest problems, public safety, affordable housing, homelessness, climate change, and we can only do that by working together. So I am committed to working with, if I'm successful, working with the other city council members, with the mayor, with the community and with residents of the D4 and across the city to really make the city the vibrant, safe city that I moved to 22 years ago and that people have even before me, the folks that are from here, remember it to be. You know, I'm honored to have the support of Mayor Harrell, the, by endorsement, the endorsement of Mayor Harrell, council member Sarah Nelson, the Seattle Times, the Seattle firefighters, the Seattle Building Trades, and I really would be honored to have your support here tonight as well.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. As I said, my goal is to make it so Seattle's a place everyone can start a career, raise a family, and age in place. I'm proud of the work that I've been doing to push that and I'm ready to jump onto the council to do so. And I'm endorsed by a number of people that we trust to be pushing our community forward. These people include people like Girmay Zahalai, Nick Locata, Teresa Moscada, Daria Farivar, Nicole Macri, almost everyone in the public safety space, 17,000 correction workers, Lisa Dugard at LEED, Retired Trial Judge of the Year Teresa Doyle. I got awards for Moms Demand Action, the Alliance for Gun Responsibility. The bus drivers endorse me because I have a practical plan to make buses safe, as well as Dom Davis at the, at community passageways. I'm also proud of the fact that none of my endorsers have ever paid me or my spouse to get into office as a job and that I, there is no conflict of interest there and that I, I'm endorsed simply because of my history of action and my history of successful advocacy and building deals with people.
Thank you so much. We hope you enjoy tonight's debate. The Seattle City Club is organizing another debate for candidates in District 5 next Tuesday and you can find details at seattlcityclub.org.
And it's not too late to register to vote. You can always update your registration on the website. It's just not too late. You can go to votewa.gov for more information. And make sure your ballot is postmarked by November 7th and return it to the Dropbox by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day.
We'd like to thank our candidates and our live audience who have been graciously holding their applause. Now go ahead and thank the candidates.
From the University of Washington, I'm Hannah Kim with Fox 13. I'm joined by Josh Cohen here at Crosscut and Matt Markovich with Cairo News Radio. Thank you again so much for watching, everyone. Good night and remember to vote.
Have we passed the part where we're supposed to stay up here?
I did an audible on that because it's...